Thank you. I'd like to call the Board of Education Finance and Operations Committee to order. It is Tuesday, March 10th. We are in the Nashua High North Boardroom and it is now 6:45. Could somebody call the -- I'll do that. Okay. Mrs. Odin is here. Mr. Greenow?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Okay. Also with us at this point is Mr. Donovan and Tim Cummings from the city and Sean Smith from the school department. So, at this point, Tim, you're up first, so I'm going to turn your presentation over to you. And thank you for being here.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, Tim Cummings, Director of Economic Development for the city of Nashua. And on the phone this evening with me is the Director of Beyond Walls and his colleague, and I believe you already have their names for the record. So, this evening, I'm going to keep my comments relatively short, but a memo has been provided to you which goes into a little bit more detail. And essentially, we're here this evening to seek approval from you relative to using the side wall of the Keith Auditorium at Elm Street Middle School for a mural project. So, what occurred a few months back is Mayor Donches approached me and told me about a program he was exposed to relative to a mural endeavor that Lynn, Massachusetts undertook to help revitalize their downtown. He went on his own to take a look at the murals and he met with Beyond Walls. From there, myself and Amy DeRoche from the city went down and met with Beyond Walls. We toured the downtown area of Lynn. We heard a little bit about their program. And essentially, what they do is they organize and facilitate international muralists, artists who come in from across the country, and I guess I should say it could be from the U.S. as well. And they have done 65 or thereabouts murals in Lynn. And we wanted to endeavor to bring them here to Nashua. So, the idea would be is for Beyond Walls to manage, facilitate, organize, and execute a murals program where we would have up to four walls done by artists this summer. We're looking at the June timeframe. And so, with that being said, as we've continued the conversation, we started identifying walls here locally that may be applicable. Amy and I canvassed the city. We developed a short list and we presented that to Beyond Walls. Beyond Walls has come into the city a couple of times now. And one of their more recent ventures, they took a look at the Elm Street Middle School and particularly the Keith Auditorium. And they really thought that that would be a wonderful wall to use. So, explaining that that was under the jurisdiction of the Board of Education in consultation with Mr. Donovan, he recommended that come before you this evening, seek your permission to use the wall. In collaboration with, or in conjunction with this endeavor, there was a thought process maybe of also building in some sort of curriculum component because they would be doing a mural at the school. They, Beyond Walls, could facilitate an education plan or an education lesson for the attendees of the Elm Street Middle School to come out and maybe look at, participate, discuss, meet, hear about the street art that was being done at the Keith Auditorium. So, it would be a multi-phase type project if it was the pleasure of the Board to endorse this concept. And I'll just leave my comments there, but also note that the cost for this is actually being borne completely by the city's operational budget. Nothing would actually come from the operational budget of the Board of Education. We're not looking for any type of financial participation in this project. We're using money that we -- well, it's a little bit longer of a story. Essentially, we're using an unexpired escrow that we wouldn't be using otherwise. And that's only temporarily until we actually receive funds from releasing a facadesment that we have on Amherst Street, which was contemplated to be used for actually an artistic type project. So, the total cost is going to be about $50,000. And it will be done in partnership with the Nashua International Sculpture Symposium along with a couple of the other artist groups here in the city.
Okay. Thank you. Let me also note Amy DeRoche is here with Mr. Cummings. Any questions? This -- Johnson?
Johnson, thank you.
That's okay.
Mom, wait.
Mr. Cummings. Okay. So, this is going to be totally picked up by the city, right? And you said it's going to be, what, around $50,000?
Mm-hmm.
Or more or less?
No, no. $50,000 is what we're anticipating the costs to be.
I'm wondering because we're talking about Elm Street Middle School. It's not going to be a middle school in the next couple of years because we're building a new middle school. If we were to tear down the building, we don't know what we're going to do and leave just the auditorium, you know? I'm really on the fence with this. It's a project. It's in a city. But, I don't know. I think at this point in time, we could do other things for $50,000 in the city versus a mural on the side of the building here in the city. I look at things because I sat on both boards and now I'm back on this board. And this is one of the things that I would be questioning on the Board of Alderman, although I'm not sitting there. But, I don't know. I think you'd have to convince me a little bit more with $50,000. It's not a lot of money, but it is a lot of money in the scheme of things this year when our taxes are going to be going up three to six percent. Whether you have money put aside or not, I don't know. So, I'm just not one of these that's really in favor of this on the school building. Thank you. Mr. Greenow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it's a good project. I know that the Keith Auditorium is not coming down whether we build a new school or not. That's one of the things that we want to save. My daughter is involved in the arts at Nashua High South. And she's actually been involved in a mural inside the school. So, I guess you're going to enlist students. I guess my question is, and I -- it's really not a question, but I just want to make sure that the kids are safe because it's a huge wall. And you people have done this before, so I'm sure you will keep the students safe. But I just want to make sure that, because it's a very huge wall, that the kids stay safe and it's a great experience for them. But I'm actually in favor of this. And I think it's a good project for the kids. I don't see any reason why we can't do it, especially when it costs us nothing. That's a big concern with the operating budget of the school. So, it costs the school district nothing. So, I would tend to be in favor and vote to advance this to the full Board.
Mr. Donovan?
Yeah, I have a few questions. What would the size of this be?
So, if I may, I don't think we actually have an idea as to what the actual size would be just yet. That would actually be up to the artist. We would give them the parameters and logistically what we could actually achieve relative to height and width and actually getting to it mechanically speaking. But the goal is to try to give the artist as much creativity as possible so when the inspiration hits them, they're able to actually execute on what it is that they would be looking for. I mean, essentially, what we scoped out or defined is the side wall of the Keith Auditorium.
Okay. But some of, when I look at some of the pictures, they use most of the wall on the pictures that are attached. So, it could use most of the wall. Right?
Yes.
Okay. And is there any issue with the neighbors? Do you need to check with the neighbors before you do a mural?
No.
Just a -- okay. And then decision on what to paint. You've sort of alluded to that. Is that the artist that's chosen will decide what to paint, but would they check back with?
There's guidelines that they have to follow. For instance, nothing political, family friendly. You can get a sense as to the type of work that has been produced previously. But again, the thought process is, is you want to give as much autonomy to the creative freedom as possible. So, the artist would have that ability.
I think it's a real nice idea. We do have some murals downtown that are very appealing. But when I thought about this, being on a school, we just have this week, or started last week, the art show. And we have so many talented students that probably would like to do something like this. I would like to run this through our art department, through our teachers, to see if we have students that might be interested in this or if maybe if this goes through, if this group would be interested in involving some of our students in this. We have extremely talented art students. If you go out, I'm sure at City Hall, you see some of their work. But it seems to me if it's on a school, it would be good to involve students, not just middle school students to come out and see it and get a little thing, but to involve some of our high school students. I'm just wondering if maybe these people would be willing to work with some of our students.
Well, the people who would be producing it, Al, is on the phone now.
Okay.
You know, I defer to him on it because I don't know, but I'd be happy to speak with them about that and bring that back to you.
Okay. Al, do you want to make a comment about what I just spoke to?
Yeah. We love to involve the youth. Our means of involving youth, you know, especially as art departments and curriculums have been cut back on budgets, often it's the art department that suffers the most here. So, you know, the way that we've done our work, and we've done it in, we've now worked in four cities. We've probably installed, well, we've installed 78 pieces of large-scale artworks. We bring in an international artist that's actually working as a professional artist for each wall, as well as we'll also bring in local and regional professional artists. But they're professional artists. And all of the artwork is kid-friendly, family-friendly. It can't be overtly political. We have a lot of protocols that we go through to ensure that that's the case while also giving artistic freedom to the artist. And we supply them everything that they need to put up the best possible piece of art. On the backside of installing the art, and it depends on what youth programs are going on or whether school is in session or the time of year. Obviously, here in New England, we're somewhat limited on the timing of when we can install art. But we then involve the youth on a social and emotional learning practice based on the art that's now in their community. And so, this is something that we would love to work with the city of Nashua on and for development by Beyond Walls, taking in some of the strategic plan or the curriculum focus of the school system there in Nashua. But it's really based on the art that's now owned by the community that's up on the walls. And this is something that we've done really effectively in Lynn, Massachusetts. And so, we'd love, you know, we're excited to be doing this work in Nashua.
And what you spoke to about these people having this talent, what I'm thinking, it would be real good to share that with some of our students. As I said, we have very robust art programs here in Nashua. We have outstanding teachers. And I just think that if we're going to have this on a school, it would be good to have our students learn a little bit about the process and how the artist goes about this. And I'm just willing, if, I'm just, I would just like to know if you think the artist would be willing to share some of this with our students so that they could learn about the art as art students.
Yeah. I mean, the artists themselves are, I mean, they're really like the Larry Bird of their industry. And they didn't, I mean, so many of them look forward to the opportunity to share that with the youth in any way that they can, partly because, I mean, some of them have had, you know, different paths, different histories, and they like to be able to share, not their success, but the possibility of success for the children themselves, especially in something like art, which doesn't always get the spotlight like other things do. So, they do look forward to that. I think from an implementation standpoint, we really look to you to let us know what is available within the community. We look at the community for the demographics and we look for the cultural influences and we look for things so that we can curtail the art and the subject matter, the influence in the art itself so that it meets the community. But in terms of the opportunities within the community, the youth, just like you're talking about, if that's a possibility, we look for, I mean, we want to hear about it because if there's a possibility to use the youth, we want to make sure we don't miss that.
Okay.
And really, why it's so powerful for children and young adults is partially based on that interplay. You know, the parties that we work with have all the talent in the world, but the reality is you still have to work extremely hard and be extremely diligent. And our artists, you know, for the youth to see someone so talented, but they're there early and they work late. And there's a practice that they have to, you know, they have to have discipline. And they're, you know, ultimately, there's a connection that's formed where these parties see that this person that sort of they can relate to is at the helm of their life, that you are in control of your life and you dictate where your life goes, but everybody that's successful has to work extremely hard. So, we love any ability for us to have, to foster the youth seeing that is something that we want to do. And it's why we've so often involved youth and involved art by professional artists where youth are or where other art takes place. And it's really why this wall is particularly attractive is because it both houses a school, but the, you know, the future for the building is also to remain an auditorium. And it's also why we're involved and want to be involved after the installation of the art, where we want to come back and we want to help to facilitate bringing students to these walls, having them understand about the art, having them understand about the cultures represented, and really how the art was produced. So, it's something that goes on. And then the community has it there as a community asset.
To the point, we have a mural in Lynn that's a tile mosaic. And the artist that did it worked with a youth group here in Lynn. And there's a, and I was just telling somebody about this actually the other day. There's like a five-second clip where the kid is looking at the camera and he says how amazing it was that these artists came here and they did this, you know, they did this artwork and they put it up on the wall and now they're leaving it for us. And it really, I mean, it's not a lot of words, but when you look at his face and he says it, he's got that sense of ownership, like it belongs to him. The wall, he may not own the wall, but he owns the artwork and the experience that came along with it. And, I mean, that's what we're hoping for, for everybody who's involved, that they feel a sense of being part of the process.
Uh-huh. That must be very rewarding. Okay. Ms. Johnson?
Especially when you've got it on video and you can go back. I believe me, I've watched it more than once.
Yeah. And, you know, and then really, it's just, you know, the challenge of putting, you know, all of our artists are certified in lift operation. There's OSHA standards that we all follow. You know, the reality is, is that the artwork has to be installed by either an articulating boom lift or a scissor lift. You have to be both certified and over the age of 18. So, just physically installing the artwork on the side of the auditorium takes someone that has that certification and professional artistry. But that's what we, that's exactly what we do and what we specialize in.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I have a question here. You're going to pick out the design of the mural?
No. We're going to pick the artists that we think that their background and their past work sets them up for success there and that they have to abide by our rules of engagement.
Okay. So, who, then that artist decides on the design? Is that it, the next step? I want to get this straight.
That's correct.
Okay. So, what happens if we don't like the design that's going to go on the side of the building? Do we have a say in this? No?
Sorry. So, we edit that? We take that on? What we, we, you know, art's subjective. And so, the artwork really gets, it gets challenging when you decide what you like or don't like by a committee. And so, it's just sort of looking at, in some ways, the tail of the tape, you know? It's, this is what we do. We know we have to put up art in and around schools and children, and that's why we put up only family-friendly, not overtly political art.
And if we're going to try to integrate our art students and if this is done in the summertime, how are we going to integrate any of our students?
So, if I may, if I may. So, the thought process is, is it's going to be in June.
Right.
And it would only be a couple of weeks in June. So, yes, there would be an opportunity during the school year still to integrate the students during this school year.
Okay. That's not a lot of time to do a mural with students, to really get them involved. And we don't get a say as a Board if we like what's going up on the side of the building or not, friendly or not. Still, if you don't like the mural, you're kind of stuck with it.
Yeah. From our standpoint, we can't ever guarantee that everybody's going to like the mural. So, that's why, you know, we can't, we can't give you that 100%. But what we can do is, we can set an RFP out in order to select the artist, certainly based on the quality of their work that they've done in the past, how well they're engaged with the community in those efforts, and then what their influence is and the depictions are in their past murals. And that has to be a fit with the community so that they're not, or for hire and anything can go up. They have a creativity lens that they're going to use that impassions them when they're actually doing the wall and a real sense of ownership on their side. I mean, they're looking to be able to basically put their signature on a wall that they take very, very seriously. So, they also want you to be pleased with the work that they've done. Nothing's more of a disappointment than if they were to walk away and not feel as if everybody took pride in their work. As far as involving the curriculum and having, you know, full integration, we can also come back at a later time in order to do that if you didn't want to do it in June. And the reason why I only bring that up is I know how difficult it is to develop a school curriculum and how well it's scheduled in advance, that sometimes it is difficult to find the adequate time in order to just, you know, pick a spot. It doesn't work that way.
Thank you. Mr. Greenow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, there are a couple of things that you said that I think are really great because you talked about OSHA standards and you talked about certified, people being certified. And now, I'm much more clear on what the role of our students is going to be, basically mostly observation, it looks like, which I wasn't clear before. But I think that's, we got plenty of time for kids to observe and teachers can tell them how it was done and everything else. So, mostly, it's going to be observation. And I like the fact that you're giving the artists parameters from which to work. And I think that this is a great opportunity to bring attention to that building. I think this city needs to bring attention to that building because it is a hidden gem for the city. I've been to so many different school plays there and it's a great auditorium. And if you drive by it, you'd blink if, you know, wouldn't know it was there. But now, you have this, you have this nice mural there. It's going to bring attention to this building and hopefully, we can get more use out of that building for the city. So, I think this is a good project. Thank you.
Anybody else? I just want to say, when I talk about students, it's just not the students from Elm Street. I'm thinking of our two high schools. I would love for them to be learning something from the individual who is going to be doing this. I would like to have them learn something. It doesn't have to be a whole curriculum at all. I'm not looking for that. I just want them to gain some knowledge in art and the process and all of that. I would like it to be a learning opportunity for our art students. And I think maybe what we could do is get some feedback from the art department as to what would be helpful to their students. I will support this going on to the Board and let the entire Board, you know, $50,000? I think, wow, we could have another teacher. That's how I look at it. But I don't think that $50,000 will go to that. So, if we can have our students learn something from this experience, certainly, people make a living with an art background. So, I'm looking for a motion.
So, Madam President, I move to approve the Elm Street Middle School Art Project to the full Board.
The motion is to approve the Elm Street Middle School Art Project. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against?
No.
Okay. It passes 2-1. And it will have to be approved at the full Board. Okay? So, and if I could get back to you to maybe get some information from our art department as to what would be helpful to our students? That's what I'm looking for.
No, absolutely. Looking forward to doing that.
Okay. Thank you.
So, one quick question for timing. Would we be, when's our next Board meeting? Do you know?
Is it Monday?
I think it's next week, right?
Yeah, I think so.
Would this make it to that Board meeting for a vote?
It should.
I would think so.
I would think so.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. We've got, today is Tuesday. I think we have enough time.
Monday's a meeting? Okay. So, we have the rest of this week. We don't need a whole lot, but I'd just like some information about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
All right. Thank you.
And Amy.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Okay. The next project is the Main Dunstable Playground Project.
Okay, the next project is the Main Dunstable Playground Project. And this is all about kids.
Just remember when you speak to press the push button so that the light is green when you speak.
And if you'd like to introduce yourselves, that would be helpful.
Hi, I'm Kelly Parity, Principal of Main Dunstable. I'm here tonight as last spring, we were informed that due to some structural aging of our playground equipment, we would need to be responding to removing our playground equipment and getting some new playground equipment. And our PTO parent groups that support all of the PTO funding and et cetera, they really did yeoman's work to respond to this challenge. And I have with me tonight the two chairwomen of the committee. And this is Nolene Picconi and Julie Fielan, and they have done some incredible work to raise money to get a new playground for our kids. It's most exciting, and I think you'll be very impressed. Unfortunately, the PowerPoint presentation isn't working, so you'll have to refer to the handouts that they have presented to you. Thank you.
Does everyone have a copy of the presentation, just to be sure? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President and esteemed board members. My name is Julie Fielan, and I'm the chairperson or woman of the Playground Committee. The PowerPoint presentation that you have in front of us today, essentially, it's a highlight overview of what we have accomplished in about seven months. As Kelly has mentioned, we are replacing the current footprint playground structure. It will be torn down by the end of June this year. The whole plan is to begin our new construction project in July of 2020. There will be no change to the current footprint in terms of square footage, so there won't be any modifications in that manner. The budgeted funds that we have raised within this seven-month period is $100,000. We feel quite proud of that accomplishment. This, of course, was done by many small businesses contributing. We've had lots of charitable organizations, school members, families, friends. We've had corporate donations, GoFundMe pages, and little small drives from lemonade stands to blood drives, to students literally going around the neighborhood each weekend to collect these monies. We were also very fortunate to be granted as one of the charities from Boston Billiards. And from that, you can see, we raised $47,000. Other little miscellaneous fundraisers that the school has provided is currently at $7,500. You'll see, the picture quality is not quite what we had hoped for, but this is the new design, the conceptual plan of the playground from two views. So the playground overall, in the middle, would be somewhat bark mulch, and then we would have some rubberized play area so that we would make it ADA compliant, so that children who have less mobile means are able to partake in more of these day-to-day activities and be integrated fully with their peers. The third slide is the specifications. Again, no real modification to the actual footprint of the current playground. The only thing here is, it can be modified depending upon how Plant Ops feels that the grade of the land is. So certain pieces of equipment may be modified or twisted and not just plopped down as you see in this little layout here. The final slide is actually the proposed timeline that we have coming up. Obviously, we're here today with you fine folks. Next week, we'll be meeting with the Board of Education. Soon thereafter, in April, we'll be ordering the equipment, again, with funds that we have personally raised with our generous community members. And then, equipment will be delivered and stored with Plant Ops. Demolition will begin once school has been our final day, barring any more snow and bad weather. And then, the proposed equipment fit-up, or when the construction would begin of the new equipment, would be essentially just after the Fourth of July. So, that's it, and a high-level overview. But if you have questions, we would love to entertain them.
First, I'd like to commend you. That is an unbelievable amount of money to raise in the period of time that you did. That took a lot of coordination, a lot of hard work and dedication. So, thank you, and I want to recognize your efforts. That's just amazing, so.
Thank you.
Questions? Any questions or comments?
Ms. Johnson?
I just want to say, this is wonderful. This is, you did such an excellent job, and the students will love it for many years. And this is what happens when you have teamwork, getting together. You raise and you get something, quality playground for the students. Now, when you come around Main Dunstable School, as you're coming, it's kind of off to the side, towards the back. You can kind of see it a little bit from the road, right?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you for all your efforts and the time consuming.
Through a map?
Yeah, I know. I vote there.
Okay.
That's where I'm always at with my signs and word five, in that area. Thank you. But again, great job.
Thank you very much. Mr. Smith, do you have any input or questions?
Well, we've been working with this group for the last couple of months, and everything is a go at this point. We'll help with the demolition and with the construction, as we do with any playground projects we have.
Thank you. Mr. Donovan? I have a question. I'm looking at the black and white map that we have in our packet. Are those musical instruments at the bottom of that?
Yes.
Oh my goodness, I've never seen a playground with that.
We're trying to diversify, so not every student wants to go on a swing or down a slide, and we have those who have other talents, and we wanted to explore that option.
It looks like you have something like a surfboard between two poles. It looks to improve balance, is that what that?
Yes.
Oh my goodness.
We're trying to, with balance and coordination, and there's certain sensory stimulation that you need as you develop as a young child, and we wanted to tap into those developmental opportunities.
About 16% of our student population is in an intensive needs program, so we had to have adaptive and sensory-friendly equipment brought into the model.
Well, I see a wheelchair, and it looks like there's a ramp going up to one of the, I don't know exactly what it is, but is that accurate?
It is ADA compliant for a seesaw. There are no ramps in our final drawings at this time.
Okay. Well, I just, I think your kids are going to be real happy. I just, it's amazing, all the things you've thought about in this, and the musical instruments, I think, are just great. But congratulations and thank you for all you've done.
Thank you very much. Thanks for this opportunity tonight.
And just a minor correction, so about 16% of our children are learning disabled. Not all of them are in the programs, so we have programs if they don't make up 16%. And I, too, would like to echo the work of these ladies who have full-time jobs that this became a full-time job for. This is, they are not professional playground designers, but they've certainly educated themselves in a way that's really made this possible. And also, the fundraising events that have just been supported by our community has just been unbelievable. It is really moving to see kids that take part in a Hawk Walk. We're the Blue Hawks, so they take part in the Hawk Walk, and they went around and solicited donations, and we, our entire school did the walk, and they all know that it's going toward a playground that they're very excited for. So we're thrilled and we appreciate your support in this cause. Thank you.
Great, I can't wait to see it. And also, I believe you brought your assistant principal. Would you like to introduce her?
Oh, certainly. In the gallery, we have Mrs. Jackie Okunak. And I was just thinking, when you said, Mrs. Odin, you couldn't wait to see it, so we'll have a little sliding party, and we'll all go down that first whirly slide, okay? You'll be there.
That sounds good. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you again.
And best of luck. Oh, I'm sorry, Ray?
Yeah, we need to make a motion to approve.
Oh, yeah.
I move to approve the Main Dunstable Playground Project. And I'd also like to speak on the motion. I'd like to thank you very much for all your hard work and your support of our school system. Thank you very much.
I'll second.
The motion is to move to approve the Main Dunstable Playground Project.
Seconded by?
Seconded by Ms. Johnson. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Unanimous. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, just to clarify, this will go on Monday's full board meeting, correct?
It should, yes.
Thank you.
Kelly, can I have one copy of that for Tara?
I'll give you mine.
No, you can have that, and then I'll, she's got an extra.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you. Good luck. Okay, now we're on to the high school switch RFP.
Okay, if you recall, we sent out an RFP for switches, but then we realized that these could be covered by the E-rate. So we sort of resubmitted the bids. The bids just closed yesterday. Most of the money to make this purchase were those one-time funds that the board approved a few weeks ago. So the bids closed, there were three bidders. One of those bids, it was not a valid bid, they did not supply responses to all the requests. So it came down to the two final bidders. So we would like to move forward with a company called RTM for the wireless upgrade and the network infrastructure upgrade, which are the switches. So that's the request of the IT Department. These numbers are the gross numbers, so they'll be multiplied by .6. So the total cost of both is about $340,000 after the E-rate savings.
So we're saving, does that mean we're saving about $20,000 with E-rate?
No, we're saving about $140,000, about $120,000.
Wow.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. It was worth going out to bid again.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, I'm looking for a motion.
I move to approve the high school switch RFP for RTM for the, do you want me to name the amounts here?
Yeah, exactly.
For $351,644 for the infrastructure upgrade. Do you need the wireless upgrade also?
Yes, please.
And the wireless upgrade of $216,667. Sorry for talking so fast.
Can you, I move to approve the RTM for the wireless?
Right, move to, I'd approve the high school switch RFP for RTM for the network infrastructure upgrade, which is $351,644, and the wireless upgrade for $216,667.
Can you give me what you wrote down, and I can read that?
I didn't write it down.
If you read the motion, make the motion, then we'll vote on that.
I need a second?
Second.
Second.
On the motion to approve the high school switch RFP for RTM network infrastructure upgrade, $351,644, and the wireless upgrade for $216,677. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Oh, aye.
Aye.
All in favor, aye.
Opposed?
Past unanimous.
Carries 3 to 0.
Surf vehicles.
Mr. Smith?
Good evening again. So the city has a fund which they set aside for capital equipment replacement called Capital Equipment Replacement Fund, aka SURF. And in this year's budget, we had approval, was budgeted by the city to replace two of our vehicles. The first one is to replace the warehouse or delivery driver's box van. It's a 2009, and we're going to be replacing that with a brand-new, well, actually, 2021 Ford E-450 box van, in the amount of $45,728. That is the state municipal contract price. The second vehicle we're replacing is to replace a grounds truck. It was a 2008, we're replacing it with a 2020. The quoted price for that is $46,039, again, the state municipal contract price. And for that, we also get a new snowplow and associated frame. Even though that's the state and municipal contract price, we did attempt to get some other quotes, just to make sure we're getting the best value. We went out to a company called MHQ, and their price for the truck replacement, the grounds truck replacement, was about $3,000 more. We also asked for the box van, and they didn't give us a price. I've been dealing with Griponi for 20 years, and they've always have, seem to get the state contract and always have the best value. So we're sticking with them this year. So that's my recommendation, to purchase those two with funding coming from the SURF Fund.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Ms. Johnson? Mr. Smith, how many miles are on each vehicle?
I don't have that with me. I can get that to you.
Is it over $100,000, you think, or is it just, or under?
It's probably in that neighborhood. What happens with these vehicles isn't so much the engine, because we do take care of the engine, but body rot. Many times, we've had our pickup trucks, the floorboards totally rotted out.
Who services the vehicles?
It's a combination of my crew, and then we send them to the DPW barn for other work.
And how often do we turn the vehicles over, usually?
I program eight years per vehicle, but we always seem to get a little bit more out of that. In this case, we're looking at 12 and 11 years, which isn't bad for a municipal vehicle.
And we only use the vehicles around the cities, city miles, not highway miles, except to go on the highway to maybe the high school.
Yes.
But it's basically city miles.
All very low-speed mileage, which is actually tougher on the engines.
And these aren't diesel, are they, or regular gas?
These are regular gas.
Okay, and we get the gas at the city barn?
Yes, we do.
Okay. And none of these are the green energy ones, are they?
No, we looked at, actually, we looked at the compressed natural gas when the city started to implement that a few years ago. And for the most part, the tanks themselves took up too much space, like in our cargo vans. We lose half of our capacity, not half, but a good portion of it. So we stayed away from that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Greeno, do you have any questions, comments?
Did we?
Did we trade in the old vans? The old vehicles or...?
I play a little bit of a shuffle game with these vehicles. So, we may be taking these out of service officially. The ones I had out of service the year before, I'll trade in, and these will be like spares just in case. When we have, like, summer grounds kids, when we bring in six or seven kids every summer, those extra vehicles provide a way for them to get around the city.
So, the ones they're replacing are actually still... and you got them as a spare?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes. The ones I replaced from the year before, the ones we trade in.
Those are the ones you traded in, okay.
Yes. So, we typically have two extra vehicles out on the lot. They're almost always parked in front of my office because we don't have room in the caged-in area.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Ms. Johnson? Yeah, well, it's not the mileage on the vehicles. It's more like the body rot, right? So, do these two vehicles have a lot of body rot on them?
The box van does for... Both of them do.
They both do?
Yes.
So, where you're going to use them as spare, are you going to fix the riding underneath the vans, so they're safe past inspection?
We'll make sure that they pass state inspection. We won't use them unless they pass state inspection.
Okay. So, that means if they're pretty bad, you would have to do some body work on it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I move to approve the purchase of a 2021 Ford box van for a price of $45,728.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Okay. I move to approve the purchase of a 2020 Ford F-350 truck for $46,039.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Passed unanimously. Okay. Okay. The next one... Sean, are you involved with the next one?
I assisted, but Dan is running this one.
Okay. Since we're on a vehicle discussion, we might as well keep on with the vehicle discussion. So, the Brentwood Academy School has, for years, been trying to... They've borrowed the Boys and Girls Club van at times. They've been looking for something for transportation for their students so that they can have some vocational opportunities. They can bring them on field trips. Keep in mind, this school has a total of about 20 students, and rarely do they move all 20 students at once, but they'll move in groups of maybe, you know, five to 10 or so. So, trying to... Getting a full bus is quite expensive for that. They want to use this for part-time, for helping students find jobs, as most of these students are going to graduate from high school and go into the workforce. They want to teach them some of the issues, some of the skills that they don't typically get from their current situations. They'd also like to be able to bring them if they were going to, let's say, do an internship-type thing at a car dealership or an HVAC place or something that they could get them back and forth to. We are lucky this year that the IDEA grant, there was a $700,000 amount that was given to us that we need to... We basically have 12 months to spend it. And this is one of the items. We'd like to use that because this money will not be coming back as part of the grant year after year. It's just this one year. We did check with City Risk Department about insurance. They said, "Fine, we can add this as long as you do not use it to bring students back and forth to and from school." They promised they will not be doing that. So, we got some prices. The first item, Best Ford, had a used 2019 Ford Transit. It has 14,369 miles. They offered that for $29,000. Then, we reached, as Sean helped out, we reached out to Gripeney Ford, who has the state contract, and they can offer a brand-new 2020 for $30,995. We also... Deb Riley, who runs the program, reached out to local vendors to get prices also, and those prices came in at $45,000 and $46,000. And if you take a look at the backup for the Gripeney vehicle, you'll notice the sticker price was $43,000. They're willing to drop it to $30,995. So, that's all about the state award and the state bidding, which I think, once again, shows you that we've been buying our vehicles this way for a while, and especially when it comes to vans and trucks and things that there aren't... You know, if you want to buy a Honda Accord, you can go all kinds of places. There's all kinds of Honda Accords. There's not tons of 15-passenger vans that are available. The market is much more limited. So, based on that, I think what they would like to do is buy the new one instead of the used one. It's only a difference...
Couple thousand.
Of about... What is it?
About $2,000?
Yeah, about $2,000. So, that's what the request is.
Okay. Ms. Johnson? Yeah. The $12,000 difference on the price and what they quoted at Gripeney, that's the state bid price? That difference, $12,100?
Yes.
Yes, it is. That's pretty typical of a ratio of what we actually pay versus list price.
Okay. And this one is an XL, and the other one's an XLT. So, the other one, the used one, has... Does it have more options or whatever in it?
I took a look at the options. It was tricky to match one for one because they're in two different formats, but they seem to have a lot of the same things, trying to get exactly... I got lost doing that.
Yeah, I get it. And the warranty on this, which I should have asked the warranty on the other vehicles that we voted on. What's the warranty on them?
Yeah, I think the warrant, there's a three-year... Is that right, Sean? $36,000?
Yes.
Three-year, $36,000 on the new vehicle. I don't know what it is on the used one.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Garino?
I just have a quick question. You know, how many passengers the van holds? Is it...
I think this van holds 12.
12?
And Transportation Director Rossio thought that keeping it 12 or lower is better. We've looked into possibly maybe buying a couple more of these to move around, maybe a golf team or something like that. And actually, First Student has actually bought a couple of vans. They're a little bigger than this, and they use them for the special education buses. They've actually... This year's the first time they've done that, where they've found a few routes where they're bringing students to some of the out-of-district schools. So, that's the thing about this. If, for some reason, Brentwood doesn't exist in two years, we can still use this van. And I'm sure Sean might want to take it anyway, but we wouldn't let him have it.
Thank you.
Yeah, the IT department tends to use vans as well, so...
Okay. And thank you for mentioning... I think I saw one of those vans the other day traveling through Nashua.
It was white?
Yes, it was white, and I didn't realize we had them. Let me ask... And, excuse me, I'm sorry. If another program had 10 students to take somewhere, could they borrow this van? We're not talking to school, but could they borrow this van on a day that it's not being used by Brentwood?
Sure.
Okay. Boy, that's a real plus.
Yes.
Okay. Super. Okay. I move to approve the purchase of a 2020 Ford Transit 3... Is it 355? 350 Transit van for $30,995 for the Brentwood program.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Okay, the February financial report. So, we'll have February. We'll review March, and then come April, May, June, we'll be looking more at forecasts of where we think we're going to end up. But just to run through quickly, I'm looking at the month-by-month, one that says Monthly Actuals Expenditure Report. So, starting at the beginning, looking at the wages full-time, you can see that it's $6,391. That would... That's a month that has two bi-weekly payrolls and four weekly payrolls. So, if you go back and look at, for example, September and December, same number, $6.3 million. Those also had the exact same amount of bi-weekly and weekly payrolls. The one payroll line that went up this month was the wages per diem, which is what we charge all the subs to. So, looks like there's been a number of teachers and parents that have been out, probably for illness during the winter. But this line also does include people... If there's a teacher out for maternity leave, let's say, and there's someone filling that role, that cost would be here also. Longevity, you notice, there's a minus 300. That was an adjustment to the longevity payment made in January. Then, in stipends, it's $36,000. That's really three things. It's the head teacher payments that you see every month, which is about $5,000. It's the payment of the winter middle-school coaches. It's about $17,000. And about $12,000 of that is the adult ed stipends for the adult ed teachers for the past time period. And then, you'll see, when you look at the last two lines in there, you'll see those sort of minus numbers. The $69,000 is the amount the city gave to us late, but that's what we used for the fifth ELL teacher.
Oh, okay.
So, effectively, that can sort of get moved up to wages full-time because that's where the person's real charges are. And then, the escrow transfer, the last one, we estimate certain raises for unions. It gets put aside on the city books, and then, when the contract gets approved, it gets moved back. So, that's the contract for the AFSMI people and the contract for the directors group, the NASIS group. So, those, in a sense, too. You won't see anything charged there because the charge actually goes up against wages full-time. So, in a sense, you could take those two amounts and move them up. Okay. Fringe benefits, not too much there. Like I said, that's sort of the city makes those entries each month. If there's need for more money in those accounts, they'll come up with it. If there's not enough, they'll cover. Not too much more on that page. If we flip to the second page, at the top, you see the electricity, heating, gas, and water. So, what I did this month was I said, "Okay, so we're seven out of 12 months through..." Actually, eight out of 12 months. We have four months left. So, I said, "Okay, if we took the actuals for electricity, heating, gas, and water for last year over the March through June periods, what would we come out to be? Where would it come out to be?" So, for electricity, if we end up with the exact same, which we're not going to, but it just gives you an idea, that would... We'd spend basically $2 million on electricity, and the budget's exactly $2 million. So, it looks like that's going to come in right around where the budgeted amount is. Heating gas, if we ended up with heating gas the same as last year, we'll end up with a total there of $805,000. Our budget right now is $913,000, so we have... We'd have some extra funds in that line. And then, the water, if I did the same exercise for the water, the total would equal $171,000. The budget is $181,000, so it looks like it'll be pretty close. Water's typically been pretty close. The heating gas, the heating fuel, that's where we tend to save money. I would expect this year, with the weather we've had, that it's not going to be... It'd probably be a little less than last year. And the electricity, I expect that to start to fall. We have a lot of these agreements in place where we've put in the new high-efficiency lights. We agree to pay that back over a period of time. As those start to fall off, then we'll start to accrue the full savings. So, I think you'll start to see that. I'm going to do an analysis of that when I do the forecast in the next few months. So, I'll take a look, and hopefully, I think, we'll start to see some of those savings next year. Okay, the rest of those accounts, HVAC, et cetera, those are ones managed by Mr. Smith. You can, for the most part, he manages those well, and we'll end up probably pretty close to using most of those dollars, but we certainly won't overrun things. The next group, other services, telephone. I did the same exercise I just mentioned with the utilities, and if that's the case, that'll run to about $140,000. The budget is only about $115,000, so it'd run over budget. Now, we've talked before, and I think Mrs. Oden has asked the question. We've begun the process of taking a look at all our phone lines. We've gathered the data. We're going to work with one of our IT consultants to take a look at it. The hope is that we can go out and get rid of some of these copper lines. This was something that, had we not had, you know, the issues with our IT director being very ill, this project sort of fell by the wayside. Now, with the new director in place, we've had a few conversations, and we hope to move ahead. So, going forward, I'm hoping that number's going to decrease, though we won't probably see the fruits of that labor until the very end of this school year, if not next year. Most of the other line items, they're relatively small things. We should be fine. We are going to... In advertising, you'll see a larger number there. Next month, we're going to cut a deal with one of the larger... The group we use, I think it's called School Spring, that we use for teacher advertising. We're going to make a lump sum payment, which will cover all the ads for the whole year. Instead of doing the ad-by-ad, we've done an analysis. We'll save money doing that. The only way... We wouldn't save money if suddenly, like, one year, no teachers left, but that doesn't typically happen. So, I think we'll give that a shot and see how that goes. Then, other than that, you get down to the bottom, you see the regular transportation services. That's the regular bus contract. That's about 50%, 49% at this point. It's one month behind, but I sort of just sort of rolled things out. I think that line item will be pretty much on budget when we get to the end of the year. Flipping to page three, sped transportation, that's looking pretty good right now, but some of the out-of-district providers, who... smaller ones, they tend to be behind in their bills by a month or two. So, I think we'll end up probably close to the budget, hoping it's not going to go over too much. But at this point, where we are right now, it's pretty comfortable. Tourism out of district, as I say, is always an issue. We will run over the budget there. The budget there is only... rounds out to $5.7 million. We're already at $4 million. And typically, you're sort of a month behind because they send the bill after the students end. So, you're looking at probably, you know, another over $2 million coming in. So, I'm projecting at this point, just a quick estimate, it's going to be at least $700,000 over what's in that budget line. So, hopefully, there'll be some labor savings. It looks like we have a little in heating fuel, things like that. So, hopefully, some of these other lines that we have... And like I said, when I get the forecast done, we'll get a better sense of that. But this line has been... And we do have... We also have a reserve special revenue fund that we can charge some of the amount over, too. So, there is another little bit of a cushion there.
I have a question.
Sure.
On the special ed. Is this... Are we over because we had more kids going into special ed after we did the budget?
ed after we did the budget? Or we got higher tuition?
Each year, we do get higher tuition. We have been way below on this line for years. Last year, in the budget that we're in now, we added $800,000 to it, and I knew it wouldn't be quite enough. And then with the price increases this year, because the total number of students is about the same, but with the prices increase this year, we're looking at probably another $300,000 from where it was last year. So this is the one line item in the school budget that's been budgeted below where it should be. I have been able to find money in other lines at the very end of the year to cover it, and like I said, I do have a special revenue fund that I can charge some of it to, to cover it. But if there's a weakness in the school budget, it's this line.
Thank you.
Okay, supplies and materials, not too much there, out of the ordinary. Indirect costs, as you can see, that's the amount we get back, it's a credit to our budget, we get back from administrative costs to do the grants. And then just quickly, computer equipment, you'll see some, that line item, the budget went up because of the increase of the one-time money we got, so you'll see those costs coming through for the items you approved earlier this evening in the next couple of months. And so not too much more, when you look at the total, we're 61.73% in total, and we're, you know, eight out of the 12 months through, so that's a reasonable percent to be at.
Mr. Guarino?
Thank you. I have a question, it may be a dumb question, but it has less to do with, well, it has something to do with money, but that out-of-district cost for special ed, right, those students, do the charter schools in Nashua send any students out of district like we do, like the Nashua School District? And if they do, do they kind of revert back to us, the cost?
Well, there are no students that are going, I mean, if they went, these are students that leave our district and go to another school, so.
Right.
They could go to a charter school, and then they could leave the charter school and go to an out-of-district school, but that would have to be approved by our special ed department.
Right, and then the cost would revert back to us, it wouldn't be on the charter school.
There are, yes, all the, yes.
Right.
Yes.
And the reason why I'm asking this question is, actually, it's a discussion for tomorrow, where they did some really good work from the Regional Planning Agency, the Nashua Regional Planning Commission, with the enrollment projects, projections, and I think four years ago, or five years ago, there were 92 students in Nashua that went to charter school, and there's now 1,000 students that are going, over 1,000 students that are going to charter schools. So those, so when we have 11,000 students in our district, we would actually have, if the charter schools didn't, weren't that many, we'd probably have a lot more.
Was that 1,000 all the private schools, not just charters, right?
I thought, maybe I'm wrong, maybe I read it wrong, I thought it was charter schools.
Yeah, I don't think there's 1,000 students at charter schools.
Okay, so that's all.
There may be 1,000 students at the, you know, counting the Catholic schools.
Okay, so that's all of them together?
Yeah, those are all students that just aren't going to public schools.
Okay, I read it wrong, then, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
All right, I'll leave this for tomorrow, and I'll stop talking about it.
All right.
Okay.
Anybody else have a question or comment? Okay, I move to approve the fiscal year 20 February financial report.
I'll second.
Second, I'm Ms. Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passed unanimously. Okay, now we move on to the transfer report.
Okay, the final item of the night, we'll run through these quickly. The first transfer is from Nashua High School North, and they're moving dollars from their educational supplies line to computer equipment to replace and purchase some new Chromebooks and a Chromebook cart. And I think, as I said, typically what schools do when they do their budget, they put a lot of money in supplies, and then as the year goes on, if they have excess money in supplies, they tend to use it to buy, use for their equipment needs and things. Because as you saw with Mr. Rodriguez's presentation last week during budget, you'll see that there's many old machines, so we do allow them to do that at the end of the year. The next one is also from Nashua High School North, they're simply moving money from conferences and seminars, which they didn't use, to the rentals to cover the cost of graduation, each of the high school has to pay for their graduation costs. The next one is a district office, and actually, all it's, it's really the ELL program, and if you take a look at the, the only thing it's changing is it's going from the ELL program summer to the regular ELL program, so.
Okay.
Next one is the Technology Center, CTE program. Didn't know we had these, but we're going to purchase two Real Care babies for the fax classes, $929 for one of those babies. I don't know what they do, but they're replacing ones that they have now.
That's expensive.
Cost my parents less for me, 1954. I was going to make a comment, I'm not going to. Okay, the next one is actually Penachuk Middle School, it had the error on the top, I changed mine, I'm not 100% sure if yours were changed.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and this is, they're just moving items from supplies to equipment to purchase Chromebooks, sort of like the first one. And the last one is also the Nashua Technology Center, where they're moving money from the computer software line to educational supplies, because CTE, they probably use more supplies as anybody, but to them, supplies is lumber, supplies is auto parts, things like that. So, and that is it.
Now, do we need a separate motion for the Chromebooks at North, because it's well over 5,000?
No, you can just approve the whole report.
I move to approve the February 2020, February transfer report.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, passed unanimously. Looking for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passed unanimously. It is now 8:02, and we are adjourned.